I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Salahu Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Fields?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Black History Month, whereas the City of Redmond recognizes the month of February as National Black History Month, paying tribute to the generations who struggled with adversity and honoring the achievements, contributions, and historic events of African-Americans that shaped the fabric of our nation. And whereas Carter G. Woodson, an academic who earned a PhD in history from Harvard, sought to heal and unify America by sharing the significant history and contributions of the Black American experience. In 1926, he established Negro History Week in February. And whereas in 1976, President Gerald R. Ford officially recognized Black History Month, calling upon the public to honor the accomplishments of Black Americans throughout American history. And whereas we celebrate this year's Black History Month theme of African-Americans and labor, focusing on the profound impacts of work on the collective experiences of Black people. And whereas that work ranges from the past agricultural labor of enslaved Africans to today's Black professionals in the arts, religion, science, aerospace, finance, government, international trade, leadership as corporate executives and entrepreneurs. And now, therefore, I, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month and encourage all residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue to observe this month with relevant programs and partake in community education and activities. And I have the honor of presenting our proclamation to one of our staff members, who fits into the, I was just going to say, the idea of the accomplishments of Black Americans in our community. And so, I would like our fire chief, Adrian Shepherd, to accept this proclamation.
And I'd like him to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Well, thank you, Mayor Burney. It truly is an honor to accept this proclamation, recognized in Black History Month. And I do want to take a moment to reflect on the profound contributions and enduring legacy of Black Americans throughout our nation's history. Black History Month is not just a time to honor the past, but also an opportunity to celebrate the resilience, creativity, and leadership of Blacks and Black Americans in our community. From the sciences to politics, the arts and civil rights, Black Americans have shaped our country in immeasurable ways. Among them are leaders like John Lewis, whose courage and sacrifice helped secure voting rights for all Americans; George Washington Carver, whose innovations in agriculture transformed American farming; and Kamala Harris, who broke barriers as the first Black woman Vice President of the United States. Tonight, I'd like to share a story of a lesser-known pioneer, one whose journey has inspired countless young Black men and women, including myself. On November 4th, 1961, Captain Ed DeWitt received a letter from Washington, DC, inviting him to apply for the prestigious training course at the Experimental Test Pilot School at Edwards Air Force Base, California. This was the initial astronaut training program. At the time, Captain DeWitt was already an accomplished fighter pilot. He held an engineering degree from Arizona State University and had pursued graduate studies at the University of California, Berkeley. Despite his qualifications, his journey was anything but easy. Captain DeWitt faced relentless attempts to push him off the program. At one point, fellow trainees were even ordered not to speak to him. Yet he persevered and successfully completed astronaut training. However, when NASA selected his astronauts, Captain DeWitt's name was absent from the list. Despite his skills, dedication, and resilience, he was never chosen to command a mission. Recognizing the barriers before him, he chose a new path. He left the Air Force and transitioned into the private sector, working for IBM, becoming an entrepreneur, and ultimately emerging as a world-renowned sculptor. As a young engineering student and Air Force officer, I came across Captain DeWitt's story. I was fascinated and determined to learn more. So, I found his phone number. I called him, and to my surprise, he answered. He took the time to share his experiences with me. His journey became a source of strength for me, a guiding light through the challenges I would face in my own career. Captain DeWitt's story is one of perseverance, adaptability, and the unwavering will to overcome. And after more than 50 years of injustice, history was finally corrected. Captain Ed DeWitt was recently recognized as an astronaut at the tender age of 90, and he had the opportunity to go into space with Blue Origin. His story is a powerful reminder of why Black History Month is so important. It's a time to reflect, celebrate, and continue the work of achieving equity, justice, and inclusion for all. I am deeply grateful for this recognition and for the opportunity to stand with the Redmond community and honoring countless individuals who have shaped our society and continue to inspire us to build a better future. Thank you.
And thanks. Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you so much for sharing that story. It was really wonderful. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by the members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting and support or opposition ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the City of Redmond business, as indicated on the sign-in sheet, and there is one person signed up to speak in person tonight and one person signed up to speak remotely tonight. And with that, I'll call up Mr. David Morton.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. The Redmond Portfolio Decarbonization Report outlines a thorough, strategic approach to achieving the ambitious goal of reaching carbon neutrality from city operations by 2030. The report integrates building decarbonization strategies into the facility maintenance framework, prioritizes energy efficiency upgrades across city facilities, and adheres to the state Clean Building Performance Standard. Its holistic approach, combining energy performance metrics, equipment condition, and carbon impact rankings, provides guidance for immediate and long-term planning. One strength of the report is its detailed ranking system. By evaluating facilities through criteria like energy use intensity, greenhouse gas emissions, and equipment lifecycle, it enables prioritization of projects that align building decarbonization efforts with maintenance needs. This data-driven framework ensures compliance with state mandates and identifies opportunities for cost efficiency, such as bundling upgrades. The integration of these findings into the Redmond Portfolio Dashboard Tool facilitates streamlined decision-making and implementation. The report underscores critical challenges. The reliance on natural gas for heating and the aging HVAC systems in many facilities highlight areas of significant carbon emissions. By participating in PSE's Green Direct Program, Redmond reduces its municipal carbon footprint from electricity usage, but the elimination of natural gas remains vital. The inclusion of high-impact strategies like transitioning to heat pump systems and exploring technologies like CO2-based refrigerants is commendable. The report recognizes infrastructure constraints, such as limited electrical capacity in older buildings, and emphasizes proactive planning to address these barriers. It encourages synchronizing building decarbonization projects with regular facility upgrades to minimize disruption in costs. The report could include more robust financial modeling to estimate costs and return on investment for proposed upgrades. By including a broader community engagement strategy, the city could publicize benefits, garner support, and thereby enhance impact. Overall, the report is a well-researched and actionable guide that positions Redmond as a leader in municipal building decarbonization. It balances immediate operational needs with long-term sustainability goals and provides a model for other cities wishing to achieve similar objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Joe Kunsler.
Hello.
Hello. You have three minutes to address the council.
Well, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Why, thank you. Good, I'll keep this brief. Just want to congratulate Redmond on having a little golden age at the moment. Looks to me like you've got some of them under control. You've got the Kritzer and the Forsyth real estate opening this May. I'll be down there for the opening. You've got a new electric fire engine. Looks to me like things are going all well in Redmond, and hopefully other communities can learn from your example. We can lead well. Just want to congratulate you on all your success and wish you a happy meeting. Thank you for your public service. Bye for now.
Thank you. Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any items to be pulled from the consent? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 And that passes six to zero. Let's see, that was short. Our next item of business, we don't have any public hearings, we don't have any staff reports, so our next item is ombuds report. And for the month of January is Councilmember Fields, who is absent, and the month of February is Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. So, just a few items that came in so far, given that we are early in the month. Had a question about encouraging us to ask Sound Transit to hurry up and open the two downtown light rail stations, and I was able to happily tell the person that asked that we will be opening those stations, Sound Transit will be opening those stations on May 10th. So, for anyone who's excited for that, stay tuned for some festivities around, on May 10th. Also had an email about requesting, being able to potentially work for council members and get in touch with affordability and food insecurity groups as this person is trying to build their resume, informed them that council does not have staff, so that is not an option, but directed them to some other places to look for volunteer opportunities. And then, a question that I have requested some help with from our legislative coordinator about the bomb cyclone and how to go about cleaning up the debris that is still left because they had gotten a quote for $17,000 to clean up trees and told they needed permits. So, getting some more information of how to respond to that person. And that is it for now.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items for tonight? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you so much. Last week, I had the chance to attend the Housing Development Consortium's Affordable Housing Symposium, which was hosted here on the East Side again this year. I have distributed the slide deck to the council that kind of summarizes some of the key conversation points that took place during that day. This was a great conversation with both market rate developers, our capital A affordable developers, local electeds, nonprofits, and one of those days, you walk away with more inquisitive questions than you do answers, but a really good opportunity. So, council, let me know if you have any follow-up questions, should you click through the slides and be interested in that. We had a celebration, two celebrations last week. Thank you so much for mentioning the light rail already. The other one was our EV fire truck that was delivered, and we had a really lovely event on Saturday. So, thank you to the team and the staff, especially who helped pull that off. I wanted to mention it just again to thank the voters of Redmond. Last year, the Climate Commitment Act was threatened, and we studied that issue here in these chambers. We held a hearing and had a conversation with community, and ultimately, our council took on a resolution stating the impact that the repeal of the Climate Commitment Act would have had on our city. And the dollars for the fire truck are included in that. And after our city was able to take on that resolution and have that hearing and that conversation, which was really memorable with community, I know that other jurisdictions also took that on. So, anyway, the Climate Commitment Act was saved, the dollars for the fire truck were preserved, and we got a chance to meet it on Saturday. So, just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to everyone for that. We look forward to having it in service in a couple weeks. I also had a conversation related to public safety with Deputy Chief Quirconee and COO files regarding emergency preparedness and the role of volunteers in future emergencies. This is helping me to respond to some constituent inquiries on the topic, and I supported the city's legislative agenda on housing stability, comprehensive cycling reform, and property tax exemptions for nonprofits delivering benevolent services. Thanks.
Thanks. Are there any other ombuds reports? Council President?
I think since our last business meeting, we've not had a business meeting since we had our council conversations town hall. So, just wanted to thank everyone who came out to that. The room was packed, standing room only. We've got so many great questions from the public, and I will be responding to everyone who registered, just with a thank you and also with the opportunity of how they can get in touch with council members. But wanted also to state on the record, you can always reach out to us. Many of us have office hours, and we're always happy to grab coffee one-on-one to answer your questions. I also got all of the questions from our legislative coordinator for us to be able to review as council leadership and just make sure if there was anything that was substantially not answered, that we can figure out a way to make sure everyone gets answers to their questions. So, I just want to let the council know that as well. And really, to thank everyone who came out. We really got to hear such a lot of different questions and perspectives, and it was great to hear from my colleagues, as you shared with our community, about some of the cool work that we're doing together. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? Seeing none, next we have committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Council Vice President?
Thank you. I attended my first meeting as co-chair of East Trail this year, and we had a lot of great conversation. We are requesting an assessment on the state of federal funds that will impact the growth and development of East Trail, so hope to share that with you all once that is prepared. And had a lot of good conversation around the Parks and Trails, potential focus group for signage to make the East Trail more accessible for folks up and down the network, since it's going to be going through multiple different jurisdictions, and including potentially QR codes for alternate languages, and confirmed that our section should be open by the end of summer 2025. That's this year. Very exciting.
Thank you. Thanks for confirming that. That's great. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Earlier today, we had a Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. We previewed two study sessions for February 25th regarding temporary construction dewatering and the Redmond 2025 Code Amendment Package. Part 1 and 2 are currently being evaluated by the Planning Commission. We also forwarded several items to consent next month that are contracts related to items funded in the most recent budget, including road safety, tourism, and acceptance of new grant dollars. I attended the One Redmond Government Affairs Committee, where we had a study session on development conditions in the region. And again, as I mentioned at our earlier Committee of the Whole meeting, there is a lot of talk and interest in this subject at the moment, and our council will have a chance to better monitor and evaluate the conditions here in Redmond in a few months. The staff will have some dashboards that council can study and evaluate on a regular basis, just to be sure that when we are having conversations about the development conditions and the pipeline in the region, we're clear on what's actually happening here in Redmond, where a lot of good work is taking place. The Sound Cities Public Issues Committee will not meet this month. That time has been offered up as a training and orientation date for new committee members. An invitation was sent by SCA earlier today. And lastly, I wanted to follow up and let my colleagues know that I was, in fact, appointed to the National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee. My purpose in pursuing this appointment is to help influence the national legislative agenda on topics, on these topics, and to make sure the values of our city and the Pacific Northwest are represented at the table. There is only one other committee member in all of the Northwest. Deputy Mayor Laura Mork of Shoreline also serves on that committee. We've already connected, and it turns out she's a huge fan of Amy Tsai, our chief policy advisor. So, we have so much we agree on already. And additionally, as I've shared with the council, I hope to help make sure that we are making the most of our membership here at the National League of Cities. Their advocacy team is wildly impressive, and anything that I think the council can do to strengthen our connection to their team is helpful. So, substantially, I do have one update. While we are working to make sure, to get clarity and understanding with the changes that are being implemented, kind of on a daily basis these days, the mayor and I have already signed on to a ledger urging the Senate and House Tax Committee leadership to prioritize economic and energy future by preserving all the current clean energy tax credits that are available to state and local governments. I have this queued up to send to the council now, so I will distribute it to you in case you would also like to sign on. The deadline is on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few things to share too, but Council President?
I attended the PSRC Executive Board meeting as alternate, along with Mayor Burney, as our main member. And just one note from there, they provided some good legislative updates. We also discussed the regional priority rankings for Washtetl's 2025 to 2028 Consulted Grant Program. And we also, and they also worked on the Comprehensive Plan Review and Certification Update, which we actually heard about the preview of that work from Councilmember Stewart when it came through committees that she sits on. So, very interesting to see that pass all the way through the executive board. And then, also, we'll note, I think, PSRC has been providing some really good updates as there's changes with the federal administration in terms of their analysis of impacts on local governments. I think most of you should be on the list, but if you're not getting those updates, I wasn't sure if I'm getting more because I'm serving in this role. So, just wanted to also put out for council members, if anyone is interested in, is not seeing any updates, just to let me know, and I can make sure to be forwarding on more, especially because there have been some good memos and updates in the last couple weeks. The other thing that I'll note is that SCA has selected a new executive director, and there'll be a press release going out for that soon. But I was able to participate as a board member in doing a ranking of some of the final candidates that had come through. And then, the executive committee of the SCA Board made the final decision. So, in case any of you want to know how that process went, that is how that went. And you'll be seeing that press release come out soon.
Other committee reports, before I do mine? Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Quick update for last week's Committee of the Whole for Parks and Environmental Sustainability. We went over the facilities condition assessment for decarbonization analysis overview, and we also had a recap of the 2024 Redmond Lights Event. The recap included having over 10,000 people in attendance, which was wonderful. A great thing about this event was that it showcased where folks can be self-expressed through art. They get to be involved with, whether it's just participating and showing up, involved in some of the different art installations, as well as for business, where over 70, pardon me, over 74% of people who gave back feedback reported purchasing from vendors for an average spend of roughly $40 each. So, it's just a wonderful illustration of how sustainable community works in being self-expressed, involved, and as well as being an economic driver. So, we're very grateful for that. And on Cascade Water Alliance, Mayor, I will hand that over to you.
Thank you. I have my notes. Thank you. Council President?
You can go ahead if you want. I just had one other item I remembered.
Sure. So, another note on the PSRC Exec Committee. So, Puget Sound Regional Council is the entity that approves all of the comprehensive plans from the cities that feed into PSRC. So, that is what we'll be starting next month as the executive board. So, that will be really exciting to see that approval process, and it's something I haven't been a part of. So, excited to see that and to see what the cities have done and the ways that they are meeting their obligation for housing and business. So, that's exciting. As has been mentioned a few times, I also sit on the Sound Transit Board, and we announced last week that May 10th, the final two stations in Redmond will be opening to the public. So, you'll be able to get on a train in downtown Redmond and take it, for now, to southeast Bellevue and points in between. And then, I haven't been told anything different yet, so at the end of the year, the trains will go all the way into Seattle and beyond. So, pretty excited about that. More to come on the May 10th celebration. There will be both a traditional ribbon-cutting, lots of elected officials giving speeches, and there will be a community celebration around the station. So, more to come, but I hope that anyone listening puts it on their calendar. It's going to be very exciting, and we're really excited to celebrate this milestone with our community. As Councilmember Nueva Camina mentioned, she and I sit on the Cascade Water Alliance. She's my alternate. And just a couple of notes. One, one way that Cascade Water Alliance, they're water, we buy water from them to meet our demand in our city, and we get charged through these, like connection charges, I guess I'd say. And we've been having, we've not been meeting our targets as Cascade. However, we did just about meet it in this last year, in part because of the growth in Redmond and all of the connections that are happening. And so, I'm very happy that our city is able to help meet the demand of our community and meet the financial needs of an organization that, you know, we have to pay for water. So, that was exciting to hear. We also actually made it to a very big milestone. One of the things, and I'm going to try not to get too detailed, but one of the things we have to do with Cascade is we have to ensure that we have water supply very far into the future. And currently, now, we get water from a few different places through Cascade, and also we get water from the City of Redmond. We do have wells here. But into the future, we have, we are working on a contract with Tacoma Water, and we, as a board, approved that contract language last two weeks ago, whenever that was. And we anticipate the City of Tacoma's council will approve that contract by late March. And so, from a long-term sustainability standpoint, ensuring that we have good water supply, we're really excited to be able to work with Tacoma on that. And we will, in a deal that will hopefully save our ratepayers in the long term, and we're talking 50 years down the line. So, more to come on that. And then, two other things I think are just noteworthy. We have, as Cascade Water Alliance, has a lot of property around Lake Taps and that region, and we had been approached by someone needing to have space for solar storage of power, and we've worked out a contract with a company, and that will bring in $1.2 million next year, just in that rental for them to use that property. So, it's a pretty exciting space that would go unused. We're able to kind of help support the idea of taking, giving people opportunity to give power outside of the traditional means. And then, if any students are listening, they have an online student pledge for water efficiency. You or your kids, if you want to go and look at the Cascade Water Alliance website, there's a way to make a pledge for water efficiency, and they also help you figure out how to be more efficient in your home. So, a lot of really good resources on there, and you can find it, links from our website as well. But Cascade's an amazing organization, and I really feel proud that, as a city, we get to be part of that. And I think one last thing I'll say about Cascade, there were some questions during the comp plan about meeting the obligations for long-term water supply and our permit through Ecology. And we are, we'll be getting more official notification and send it out to our community. But we have worked with Ecology to have a three-year permit, and then we'll do a ten year after that because of this new Tacoma contract. and I really feel proud that as a city, we get to be part of that. And I think one last thing I'll say about Cascade, there were some questions during the comp plan about meeting the obligations for long-term water supply and our permit through ecology. And we are, we'll be getting more official notification and send it out to our community. But we have worked with ecology to have a three-year permit, and then we'll do a 10-year after that because of this new Tacoma contract and the work that's going on with that. We, they and we want to make sure that what's in our permit is appropriate for what's going to be going on in ensuring long-term water supply. So that's where all that is. That was long. I try not to give too long updates, but here we are. But to our community, you know, go on our website, connect with Cascade Water Lines and see what they do for our community. They have also great gardening classes if you haven't taken any of those, and they're online. They're super cool. So with that, are there any other committee reports? Council President?
I'm not sure if this, exactly where this fits, so I'm just going to do it here, which is to note that in two weeks, we won't be having a business meeting. Our business meeting is canceled because the council will be going to Olympia to meet with our legislators to advocate on behalf of our legislative priorities. And then we'll be attending City Action Days with the Association of Washington Cities and convening with our other cities as well around, around topics of how state policy influences our local work. And so just wanted to note for council members that I spoke with Amy Sye, our chief policy advisor, earlier today. And she just wanted to make sure that council members know that in advance of that, that all council members can access a briefing on the key points that we'll be talking about with our legislators. I believe that Council Vice President Forsythe and Councilmember Stewart are going to be meeting with some staff this Thursday. So there's room for one more council member before triggering a quorum if anyone wants to join that meeting. I'm not, I'm not able to attend that one. I also will be probably doing a briefing at a different time. So you can either do a one-on-one briefing, or there's still room for one more at the meeting that's happening this Thursday. So just wanted to put that out there. I think Ms. Sye will be emailing everyone tomorrow, so you can just respond to the email if you'd like to have additional briefings. She'll also be sending out one-pagers on our top priorities, so that way we all are ready to go to be able to push on the exciting projects that we're hoping to get funding for and policies that we care about this session. So that's, that's all. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other committee reports? All right, seeing none, we do have, we have no unfinished business, but we do have a new business item. Is AM number 25011, approval of an on-call, approval of on-call agreements. Fangy Garcia, Public Works Deputy Director, will introduce this item.
Good evening, mayor and the council. These are the on-call contracts for specialized services that Public Works uses, which allows some flexibility on short-term around utilizing qualified firms. You received an updated attachment A that lists a little bit more detail and the scope of all of them for environmental monitoring, stormwater engineering, surveying and mapping, water and wastewater engineering, geotechnical, stormwater modeling, and construction engineering. I'm here with Tom Hardy, who helped shepherd all the, this bundle of on-call contracts. All of them utilized, advertised last year and followed the RFQ process. The teams evaluated the qualifications and selected the most qualified firms. Today, we are asking for approval for our council board.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our deputy director this evening? I don't see any. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve AM number 25011?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.